Okay, Mr. Chair, it looks like we're going live here. You want me to start that?
Okay. Call the order, the Casville City Planning Commission, Thursday, September 9th. We'll go ahead and start off with agenda number one, opening approval of the minutes from August 26th meeting. Any discussions?
I move approval.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Agenda number two, conditional use permit for residential care home business at 68 East, 1000 South. Staff?
All right, I love this. Okay, can you hear me? The applicant at 68 East 1000 South is Esperanza, and she is wanting to get a business license for a home or a residential childcare home business to take care of her disabled granddaughter and two other grandchildren. The current expectation is one to three most of the time. The schedules will vary due because of her children's work schedules. However, she is working to get her childcare provider state license, but in order to get her state license, she has to get her business license, and so we're kind of the egg before the chicken on this. So staff is recommending approval of this proposed conditional use permit for this residential childcare home business by Esperanza. I don't think she's here.
Is Esperanza Perez here?
No, she's not.
Okay.
She's actually in the CPR closet.
Got it. Okay, saving lives. Love it. Any public comments real quick? We usually don't do this, but anybody from the public want to comment on this or going once, twice? Okay. Discussion?
Commission? So would we be approving this pursuant to her getting her thing eventually? Or?
No, what we're doing is giving her conditional use just for one to three because a childcare provider who cares for five to eight, then that's when you need to get the state residential, and then for more than nine, then you have to get a state license. So she's going with a business license first and then also getting the conditional use permit.
She is going to get her license through the state, so that's part of the CPR that she's taking.
Right.
So she'll be totally certified, you know, able to do this in her.
And the conditional use permit allows for up to 12, even though she's
It does allow up to 12.
Even though she's gonna have less than that.
Correct.
Okay.
So, sorry, I'm maybe a little tense tonight. So for the conditional use, don't we usually require them to be licensed first? Or is that?
It's an interesting thing. So in order to do the licensure, we have to put in a double license. So the Department of Professional Licensing, but in order to get your professional license, you have to have a business license. So it's like both of them piggyback. Like they go in, yes, chicken and egg scenario. So what would happen is if tonight, if or when you approve this, I'm just putting it out there, that you, what we would do then as staff is we would send a letter to the state saying that the planning commission has approved this home residential care childcare. We're allowing that to be a business. Once, then they will give her the number, and then we will do the license.
Okay. So is there a way that we can approve this conditionally so before she gets her first the certificate, we limit it to under five children? And then when she, I mean, is she going to get the state license immediately? Or?
Yes.
Reaching for the top rung, right?
She is wanting to do it to take care of her grandchildren, not necessarily to produce a small home business.
Right.
Where the child is disabled, there's government funding that can help provide.
And that's why, okay.
Okay.
So she's doing this to be able to enable Medicare, Medicaid to provide services in the home for the child?
Unfortunately, she wouldn't need it but for that.
But for that, so I see where you're going. So this is enabling her to be able to access services and funding for her granddaughter. Perfect.
I think, I guess in my view, the conditional use is totally separate consideration than these other state requirements, which are equally, if not more so, important. The conditional use, in other words, what we are tasked with looking at tonight, I think, is what are the impacts to the surrounding neighborhood? Certainly, there are other government entities that can and should look at whether this individual is able to do what they are wanting to do with these children in the home. We are looking at how does this use affect the area? So I think that's what our consideration should be, and not so much these other things, which are, like I said, important, but not in our purview.
Right.
Correct.
So looking at the neighborhood.
For the number of uses, I don't see impacts where she's not gonna be.
Well, okay, but let's say theoretically, she could go to 12.
Well, that's, I think that's up to us. It says it shall not allow more than 12. If we only, if we felt like there were impacts with three and we want to limit it to two, that's our call, is what I think what we're deciding. Or if we wanted to go 12, that's up to us, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I know without the applicant here, it's a little bit of guesswork, but my belief is limitations on the numbers would not cause conflict with what their intentions are, if that's something the commission would decide, and if they decide that they need more at a different point in time, they can come back before you.
Perfect.
If you feel that's necessary to make this work.
So this is located off of Main Street, down the street from Phillips 66, right? Or am I reading it wrong?
You're correct.
No, I'm sorry, no, it's wrong. I got one.
No, you're wrong. She's back by the, just.
No, no, actually, this is different. I had the wrong address.
Hers is.
Near the botanical, botanical center, yeah. So plenty of space.
Palm Springs Park.
Yep. Jared, anything?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, hold on a second. Just Toby or Wolf, anything?
No.
Okay.
Jared, I'd like to make a motion to approve a conditional use permit for residential childcare at 68 East 1000 South for Esperanza Perez, as recommended by staff.
I'll second.
Just real quick, Lyle, how do we ensure that until she's fully licensed, she's only, she's only taking care of less than five? Is there a mechanism for us or to put it in there?
Technically, she can't take care of any until she's fully licensed.
Okay.
Except in the case of her grandchildren.
Right.
She doesn't have much family, but based on the nuances of this, our business license process will follow through with that to ensure that really she's not operating any kind of business and taking care of any outside of family.
Okay.
Until that's taken place.
All right, just want to make sure. All right, we'll start voting with Josh.
Did we have a second?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Steve. So aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item, number three, conditional use permit for two-family dwelling at 3 West 600 North. Staff?
I'll take this one. Mr. Blake Hadley brought in some sketches and plans to convert a house on 3 West 600 North, write their picture to become a duplex. Staff looked at a 500-foot circle. We found no others, so that allows an arm one eight. As long as there's none within 500 feet, he couldn't be the third one. Well, he's the first, so that got that out of the way pretty fast. The other condition that we really look at is if there's adequate parking. Appears he's got a dug garage already with enough driveway for four cars. Easy. He's proposing that, I believe the house now is five bedrooms, so he's gonna have three bedrooms upstairs, kitchen, and one of those three-quarters bath, I believe. And then in the basement, there was two beds, bath, kitchen. He, I believe he's here, so he can explain anything else he can have. He has a walkout, I believe he said, for the basement level, and staff recommends allowing it with the conditions of parking, which I think is adequate, and within the 500 feet, there's no others, I believe. It's, staff recommends, and I believe he's here, so you can ask him any questions.
Great. Thank you, sir. Mr. Blake Hadley, are you here? If you could approach the podium? If you have anything to say? Yeah, yeah, please, yeah. And then just state your name and address, please. Anything you want to add to this or? Okay. Staff, have any questions real quick for Mr. Hadley? Okay, yeah, sorry about that. I didn't realize you didn't have anything.
So I do currently rent out the basement. I do live at the top.
Okay. And do you intend in the long run, what's your intent, to remain there? Or do you see yourself?
I see school is adequate with my kids, and I find.
Okay. Got it. That makes sense. Okay, thank you. So this time, we'll take public comments. Anybody here to talk about this by chance? Okay. There was one public comment, and I'll read it out for the record, came from Mary Ann Clark. Said, "I'd like to voice my opposition conditional use permit being requested at 3 West 600 North. Feel this would open the door for at least three other homes legally rent their basements. Casville has been notified of the situation, have refused to enforce zoning of this neighborhood. As retired homeowner, I feel our property values are not being protected. We have worked for years to secure retirement, and it's being undermined." So again, just to address that particular email, again, it's, as the code stipulates, there's no more, it's not allowed within 500 feet, so hopefully that addresses her complaint.
If you'd like, Mr. Chair, I could speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, please.
So we have had concerns from this neighborhood in the past on certain units. When we say there are no duplexes within 500 feet of this, there's no legally recognized duplexes, so that's part one. So there are no other official duplexes here. And I can just, for example, even next door to this, I have been in a home under complaint and reviewed that particular home, where there are basement apartments, but they fit into situations that are either familial or meet our occupancy currently under our ordinances. So that's a challenge that we deal with on occasion, and we're aware of the concerns, but I just thought that I'd address that. As far as any official, we believe that it does comply in need. And it may be a distinction, which is a little different for this particular application, but could be an interesting topic for a different night or later tonight after this. One of the unique things about what the applicant stood this evening is it's a true duplex, which frankly, we love as a city, because that puts in some fire separation and HVAC separation within the units, frankly, making them a little more separated than what you'll remember. The state is now saying we have to allow, which are internal accessory dwelling units. In that case, it has to be owner occupied. This wouldn't necessarily require that he remain there. He stated that, at least for the current time being, that's his plan. But because it creates the separations and some additional safety measures, frankly, within the structure, he'll pursue that with the building official. I know he's been in touch with them. That would be a next step in this particular case that you won't see on the IEDUs, but it'd be interesting to talk about that moving forward on how do you deal with duplexes different, if at all, now that that is law. So something to consider.
Okay.
So with this, he'll have to comply with all of the building code requirements for separation and all of the other?
Correct. Yeah, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, he's met with the building official. We've talked through some of the sheetrock and fire separation things, so that's their intent to pursue that.
Okay.
What is the status of the ADU ordinance at this point?
So the city council has passed ordinance that will take effect October 1st for internal accessory dwelling units. The external piece of that, which was recommended by the planning commission, is not dead, but it's on hold for a minute with the council. They want us soon to be back with more restrictions before they're willing to consider it, but so there's.
But the IEDU part of it is approved.
October 1st will be effective.
Okay.
After October 1st, will this be a non-issue? Or will we still review these?
And that's a question. The difference on this one is the IEDU has to be the owner occupied type unit, and it doesn't require some separation. So if we want to continue to review these, we need to discuss that within our ordinance. Maybe we prefer people go through and do the full separation duplex.
Yeah.
It'd be easier for them if they choose to go that route.
Right.
Instead of bringing them through a conditionings process, but maybe we want to continue. So, you know, it's an interesting conversation to have.
Yeah. I think, I mean, most of the time, we do leave it up to you and staff to recommend what goes in front of our commission, so, but, yeah, I mean, I think we should encourage this, this route.
But the interesting thing from, is from a practical standpoint, as of October 1st, or, you know, in accordance with what the state required, from a practical standpoint, to the impact, regarding impacts to the neighborhood, there is zero difference with this and what the state required. There's two units in effect, whether there's people that are related there, living there, or in this case, they don't have to be related, nor does it have to be owner occupied. Impact to the neighborhood doesn't matter. So Casvillians and Utahns have to get used to the fact that these things that are very similar, practically speaking, are going to be the norm as of October 1st. And there's nothing we can say about it unless we want to go en masse to our state legislators and get them to change their minds, which is probably an uphill battle. But even beyond that, what I would say is, and we've said this before on conditional uses, just a conditional use in the abstract, whether it's a duplex in this case, or a childcare facility in another case, or whatever else it was, the presumption is approval if we can impose conditions that mitigate the impacts. So our question is, what are the impacts? If we can find conditions, we have to approve it. I think the impacts are probably two, presumably, two additional vehicles, or one maybe. And if there's enough parking there, what other impacts are coming to the neighborhood? I guess is a question I would pose. And if there aren't any, then we should approve it.
Yeah, and I think we're required to approve it if it meets all of the
Right.
requirements or the stipulations on our ordinance, which the staff has said it does with the additional parking, and they're able to provide that, so we're basically obligated to approve.
Right.
Until October 1st, and then it's a done deal, no matter what?
Not on the, not on duplexes.
So if you don't call it duplex, you can just call it a internal?
Right.
But it's the same thing, but.
But then you're limited to, you have to be living on the premise, whereas here, he, Mr. Hadley could eventually
That's what I'm saying, move out and rent it. Practically, though, there's this, there's no difference in the impact to the neighborhood.
Right.
So seeing as there's no, seeing as he's met all the conditions with parking and everything, I think we can just, we're obligated, so I think we just.
Sounds like a motion, Steve.
I'll make a motion, then, to approve conditional use permit for two-family dwelling for Blake Hadley at 3 West 600 North.
I'll second.
Sorry. Go ahead, Toby.
I guess whoever you want to take the second.
Should we indicate in that motion that the requirement for the four parking spaces, or the two per unit is?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll amend that, just say that the parking space is, meets the requirement for the two per unit.
Lyle, usually, is that stated? I mean, whether we call it out or not, because, or?
Sorry, sometimes I can vote the ordinance, but tonight, we're finding your monitors, I can't. So unless you have more than eight units, I think, in a apartment building or something, Casville City's parking requirement is two per unit.
Got it.
And then there's a minor reduction after that point, I think is the number.
Yeah.
So it is kind of in the books already.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's under 17325, right? Okay. No, I didn't. All right, voting, Jared?
Aye.
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 Okay. So moved. Next is a item number four, public hearing and request to rezone 0.51 acres of property at 48 South Harves Lane from the R-110 residential, single-family, 10,000 square foot to RA single-family agricultural zoning district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the request before you this evening is a little bit unique, where the purpose for the rezone is not to create new lots. It's more of a use question on the property. This is the new cottages, I'm sorry, Porawatami Estates Development, just south of 200 North and west of Smith Marketplace a little bit. And if you look in the middle of the screen, you can see the yellow. It's currently an R-110 zone. That's a single-family residential 10,000 square foot lot site designation that was put on this property. There's a variety of lot sizes within the subdivision, some larger, some were smaller. And so in order to accommodate the smaller ones, they sought that designation originally. The lot that we're speaking about is half an acre, and the applicant that's requesting the rezone actually lives adjacent to it in this RA lot, right where the text is on the screen. And so they're acquiring additional property behind their home, and they just want to keep the zoning contiguous on both pieces. Primarily, there are some rights in favor of farm animals in the residential agriculture zone. It's similar to what you can do in a single-family zoning district. A lot of what farm animals can be approved for under the R-1 districts is a conditional use, and would have to come before the commission. Other than that, they're highly similar. But in order to just assure and solidify, I think, that the departmental condition, I believe they desire to keep horses on the property, they're here to speak to that, they requested the rezone to the RA district. So again, this is a public hearing this evening. It is a legislative item, different than the conditional uses you've just seen as a reminder, where you're tasked to make a recommendation to the council as you look at this, how does it fit for the area, and does it meet the general plan? And then we'll make a recommendation to the council as you're done with it this evening. Again, the applicant is here. I'm happy to take questions as well, if you have any for myself.
Okay. The Binghams? Do you, do you guys have anything additional you want to add? If you do, sir, if you could just approach the podium? Please, thank you.
So this has just barely been approved, the Porawatami Estates, and the lot was basically designed to be zoned residential agriculture. So as you notice from the surrounding areas, there's quite a few properties that are zoned that already, including our own that is zoned that. So we just want to basically have the animals on the property without having the conditional use. So if we ever want to change, like to a cow from a horse?
Like the Stevenson's. Like the Stevenson's who bought my lot. I live down on Preston, and all the lots on Angel, but mine behind are all residential agricultural, and the Stevenson's have a cow all summer.
Nice. Okay. Thank you. Anybody here for public comments? Okay, we didn't receive any emails either. Commission? Pretty straightforward?
I mean, there's one concern is putting agriculture next to residential just because of roosters, but it doesn't look like that's an issue here, so.
Already there.
Already in the clear on that one, so, yeah.
Bring your roosters over to the Binghams.
I like roosters. I've got one, the Spackman Estate.
I, I, you've got, I mean, if you look down on Angel Street, you've got, you've got RA all down in here. I don't think it's a big issue. Burton's are across the street from you. If I'm not mistaken, that's that six-acre parcel. So I, I don't know. I think.
Are you gonna comment?
Are we ready for a motion?
I think so.
This is for a recommendation?
Recommendation.
Okay, I'll make a motion to forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the request to rezone 0.51 acres of property at 48 South Harves Lane from R-110 to RA.
Second.
Okay, start the voting.
Aye.
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 Good to go. On to the next one.
Lyle, when will that be on the next city council agenda?
So probably for the Binghams as well as those things. So the city council generally requests that there be kind of a gap between meetings before we take these on absence to them. Trying to think of my needs here. So the next time the council needs, this will probably be the very first March of October, when it's on their meeting, because it's just the final stage. It's that first Thursday of October. It looks like it's the seventh.
Okay, moving on to agenda number five, public hearing for rezone of 2.54 acres of property at 1742 West Phillips Street from the R-120 to the R-1LD zoning district with the PRUD overlay zone for Robert and Linda Born. Staff?
I'll introduce that as well. Thank you for letting me know the mic's quiet. So this is right on the bend of Phillips Street is where the address is located. You can see, again, the highlighted yellow property. The family, see, most of them here this evening, the Borns, own two and a half acres of property. The existing zoning in R-120 is essentially one home for just a little bit under half an acre, and the R-1LD is two homes per acre. So what the, what they're hoping to do, I'll skip ahead to this, this concept, is to keep the existing home on the lot, and with the private drive of the Hammerhead or Coliseum turnaround of some sort, add four new homes on the site. And technically, they could do that under an R-120 zone, but speaking with them, just to get a little bit more flexibility in potential lot size, which generally leads to better layout, they've asked for the R-1LD district. So the two zones are identical in the uses that are allowed. They're both regulated under the R-1 chapter of the Casville City zoning ordinances, so same uses. They have the same frontage requirements, same setback requirements, so the homes, at least from the street, look the same. The difference is, again, a 20,000 square foot minimum under the existing R-120 versus two units per acre, but some of those lots could be as small as 12,000 square feet. So you have some larger lots and some smaller lots in the configuration, again, allowing for a little more flexibility on how it lays out. So I think with that, just kind of the difference between the two zones, if you have any questions on it, same process as that last item, we're looking again for a recommendation to pass along to the council, based on your feelings is how this meets for this area, and based on the general plan. And again, you can see some of the R-1LD in the area around it, mostly it's R-120 directly adjacent to it. And again, just reminding you of the public hearing. With that, I'll share it back to you, Mr. Chair.
The Borns, are they here?
Yes, the applicant is present.
Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, the decision we made is we're going to give this to our kids. And there're gonna be, two of them will be at least half acre, and the others will be 0.4 something. Almost all of them will be half bigger lots. And so we thought we're going, you know, what we're requiring to do, you know, going in there with pavement, carpet, and everything, with the utility underneath the room, we're gonna have it surveyed, so we know exactly where the boundaries are for each one of those lots. Two of our kids are probably going to maybe start building next year in somewhere in that neighborhood. But the other two, in fact, particularly one, who lives in Augusta, Georgia, it'll be five years. They moved back, they committed that there. In fact, that's my ticket to the Masters.
I was gonna say.
Good trade.
Anyway, we're dividing it pretty much even between the four kids.
So what you're saying is that we approve it, we get also tickets? I'm sorry.
So that's our intent, is going to give this to them, and talk to our CPA about how to do that, and talk to them.
Smart. Get them for January.
We just want to make sure we're following all the procedures. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Public comments? Anybody out there? Comments? I know we didn't receive any emails, so with that, commission? I know we didn't receive any emails, so with that, commission?
Pretty straightforward?
No.
No.
I think it's, the reason there's not a problem in my mind is it's right in line with the general plan as it currently stands. And as it probably will stand after it gets adopted here soon. But yeah, it's right in line with it. And that's also probably why we didn't get any comment. So, from the public.
I didn't speak to it much, but just maybe to emphasize one point, and I noticed I didn't write that on the map. The PRUD component of it is simply for a private drive. So, that would be just part of your consideration, the anticipating.
So, does that need to have a separate motion, or is that just, can that be included in the?
I think that would be included in the motion.
Well, if that's the case, Mr. Chair, if you're ready. I would make a motion that we recommend, make a positive recommendation to the council for the request to rezon 0.51 acres at 48 South Harves Lane from the R110 residential zone to the RA zone with the PRUD overlay. Am I on the right one?
2.54 acres.
Oh, I'm on the wrong one, sorry. All right, let me try that again.
Well, first mistake I've made in two years.
I've got it now. All right. Positive recommendation to the council for rezon of 2.54 acres of property at 1742 West Phillips Streets from the R120 single-family zone to the R1LD single-family zone with the PRUD overlay zone.
Second.
Hey.
Aye.
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 Okay, so move.
And just a reminder to the Born family, as you asked, Mr. Chair, so the October meeting is likely when the city council will see this and will again send you a specific reminder.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, number six is a tabled item, so no discussion there, or is there? Anything we want to discuss, or? Okay. Okay, well, then let's jump on to agenda, I'm sorry.
So, this is tabled from a previous meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, got it. Okay, so we are taken, okay. I got it confused, okay, got it. All right, back to agenda number six. Tabled item, consideration development agreement and rezon of approximately 0.4 acres of property at 65 Presswood Road from R18 to the general commercial zoning district. Obviously, we have heard this before. So, Lyle, will you update us on what's new?
Yeah, and I appreciate the comment. I wonder if there's a better way just to label that in the agenda next time, because the public might read it the same way you did. So, just maybe a brief update. So, we held a public hearing on this, I think it's been two meetings ago. This is the corner lot on Presswood Road and 30 West Street across from Heritage Park. And the applicant, they're here this evening, they can speak to it further, has requested the general commercial zoning district. Again, that's what's adjacent to it to the west. Looking, not immediately, but eventually, to do some commercial use on this property, and that's the purpose of the request. We had the public hearing at the last meeting. You had neighbors and other residents that were here that had some comments about it and stated some concerns. And so, it was tabled at that time. The commission asked the applicant to maybe go work something up to see if there's a way to address some of those concerns. And so, they put together some concessions and a development agreement that's here before you that you can take a look at. I just pulled out kind of the quick highlights is they were willing to limit a few specific uses that are generally allowed within the general commercial zone. So, intending to do any light industry or research, they wouldn't do any buildings higher than 35 feet. Again, a residential height is 30 feet, so in theory, they could be 5 feet higher, but they're not looking to go beyond that. No RV parks and no storage services. And then, beyond that, they did propose some recommendations that they felt might address some of the concerns they felt with the neighbors as far as the architecture, lighting on the property, fencing, and what type of signage they would use within the property. So, I guess what we're looking at this evening is for the commission to determine if with these restrictions or without, what would your recommendation be to the council for their consideration on the rezon request? Again, the idea would be with the development agreement runs with the property, so whether it's the applicant in front of you tonight or future owners, they would be bound to similar restrictions until the city decides differently at a different point with them. So, that's, hopefully, just a brief update for you. I hope you take questions. And again, the applicant is here this evening that can also speak to it further.
So, Lyle, I do remember from my notes, Mr. Nielsen was willing to enter a development agreement. Is that?
That's correct, yeah. And in fact, they've proposed these restrictions within the development agreement. This is something that they volunteered that they believe will work for their needs, and they're hoping will address the concerns of the neighborhood.
Anybody else have questions for Lyle before we?
I don't know if now or later is the time, but I, so I wasn't here at the last meeting, which I apologize, I can't even remember where I was. But so, if, I'd just be curious for maybe if it's Lyle or whoever, a quick summary of what, if there were neighbors there, what was, what were the comments? And then, in addition, or along with that, I would be curious what the, whether the neighbors asked this or not, I would be curious to say, to hear what the discussion was, maybe about the history of the building. And of course, I've got on my mind, you know, the recent concerns from many citizens about the historic value of the building next to us. And I think this building on this property is older and perhaps even has more historic value than the building next to us. So, I'm just curious what, if any, comment there was from the public or from the applicant or whatever, discussion about the building.
Yeah, so the roundup I'll give you is that a lot of people, a lot of the residents, if you look on the map right there, you've got the dental offices. So, a lot of residents were complaining about just in general parking. I think the neighbors behind Mr. Christian talk about, you know, people that go to dentists there, like myself, will park on that street. And they were just afraid going to the commercial zoning, what that would mean. And I think, obviously, Mr. Woods is here to also help out Mr. Nielsen. But one of the things that we called out was probably better next time just to tell him, because there was a lot of question is, what exactly are you doing? And from my understanding, just building small little widgets. And the reason that he wants to, Mr. Nielsen wants to rezon commercial is that, I mean, right now, he's paying rent down in the strip mall on, was it near Gris Mill? And instead of paying rent, why not put his business here? So, I think, I'm assuming that a lot of that was addressed between Mr. Nielsen and the neighbors. So, that's the gist of it.
And the complaints the neighbors made, it sounds like they've been addressed in the development agreement.
Right.
So, that should help with that.
So, with that, Tom?
Thank you, commissioners, appreciate that. Josh, for your question regarding the historic value of that particular house, it is a local architect who's built several homes near here similar to that. It's not in any historic register, does not mean to be, it's at the discretion of the owner if they want to try and get it on there. One of the arguments that I would make personally, I've studied architecture for many, many years, probably all familiar with Frank Lloyd Wright. He built over 500 structures, 79 of which have been demolished. So, there is no, we've got to save everyone, even for someone as renowned as Frank Lloyd Wright.
Is this William Allen?
It is, yes. So, while it's part of our history, it's not something essential that, boy, we've got to save that one. We have other examples of it, probably better examples of his architecture. And I think it was brought up by one person who just sort of questioned, is this historic in nature? And while it is, it's not in any historic registry, it's perfectly fine, even if it was within certain application to remove it. So, that really was kind of a minor issue for the neighbors. As we kind of approached this, there were three big reasons why they didn't want this. Number one was because they didn't want it. They didn't really have reasons behind their feelings, just we don't want it, we want it just to stay the same, which totally get that. For years, we've had people come up and give us the same exact reason. I understand that. The other two were really outside of our control on this particular property. One is that street on 30 West that you've mentioned in the parking there. So, I don't know if there's anything the city can do to help with that, restrict it, limit it to one side, something like that. They talk about the narrow channel of going through, the danger. It does exist during the day, obviously. The dentist office close about 5:00 PM. It's not an evening issue. I don't have an answer for that. I don't know that creating something on the other side is going to substantially increase the amount of parking, because it's already a problem. So, I don't see that as exacerbating an existing issue. The other problem was crossing the street, that the kids going to school and getting to park their kids, they're not walking to Fairfield to cross the crosswalk. It's not illegal to cross there. It's just not as safe as it could be with a crosswalk or a flashing light or something like that, which I don't think we would have any objection to a crosswalk being placed there. It's just not something that we would, again, have any control over with that particular piece of property. We did try to make efforts to limit the impact to the neighbors with the lighting that we would use to have shielded lighting, things like that, where it's just not going to be shining back towards their homes. We're not able to put a fence on the east side of the property because it's a shared drive. So, without an agreement with that particular neighbor, which we cut him off from the drive, we're not able to put a fence there to minimize that. So, unless something happens with that neighbor who is also the neighbor to the north, we're really limited in what we can do to the east. But obviously, we're willing to put a privacy fence along that north boundary. Again, we're just trying to minimize the impact. I know these neighbors, they're friends of mine. I got many year-fuls afterwards for several days of what can we do here that's different? We could do multifamily, you know, but don't really think that's something that they'd be in favor of, because when that property just to the east came, it was originally 12, we whittled it down to five. Even that, they struggled with because they liked the one house that was on it at the time, and I get that. It's adjacent to the dentist office and commercial property, so it's not any kind of spot zoning. There was some concern from, can't think of Steve's last name now all of a sudden, that it's commercial creep, so to speak, that if this, then what does the next one do, what does the next one do? Obviously, those new houses half a block away aren't going anywhere anywhere soon. The house adjacent to him, and that could be a possibility, that those brothers were here and have several times expressed no interest in doing anything other than what they have. The lady on the corner, it's about 90. Her house is about 190. So, something will probably happen with that when she passes away. But again, that's not a call that you guys are having to worry about right now, that's something in the future. Past that, there's really nowhere for it to creep. Everything else is pretty established there, so we'd be talking possibly one property adjacent to this that may sometime in the future look at wanting to rezon commercial but currently has no desire to. We would be looking at architecture, again, consistent with the area. We're not trying to do something obscene or flashy or out of character. We'd like it to blend in as much as possible and just be part of the neighborhood. So, available to answer any questions you might have.
Would the plan be for off-street parking, so there wouldn't be any impact? Like, you wouldn't expect people to park on the road? Like, would there have been a parking offside or off the road to come?
Yeah, absolutely. We're bound by city regulations that we have to have a certain amount of property per the size of the building. So, if we built it absolutely as big as we possibly could, we'd still have to have enough parking to accommodate that. And that was a concern, you know, if you have employees parking, as it can be enough, and then you have customers potentially coming. Their current business really doesn't have customers coming. So, from a current business model standpoint, you're looking at employees only. Granted, that can change, obviously, for future uses, but we're looking at building within city specifications, so we would have onsite parking and not have to use the road.
Tom, you just mentioned building, so you are eventually looking to do what to the building?
We would demolish the house.
Okay.
And build a commercial building. It wouldn't be for at least two years, which I believe we put the development agreement. I'm not 100% sure on that. I proposed it at one point. Christian actually did just re-sign his thing next to another year, but is willing to forego any development of the property at all for another two years. He's got to build a house first, and I think we're still a lot dirt on that one, Christian?
It's still dirt.
Yeah, okay.
Probably next year.
So, until the house gets built, this isn't going to get built. So, he's at least a couple of years out. But yeah, the plan is to demolish the house, but obviously, it's income-producing right now. It's not going anywhere in the short term.
Commissioners?
My only suggestion to the council would be to somehow consider, I'm not opposed to what the owner wants to do, and is there, I think, we should err on the side of their right to do, even with it needing to be rezoned. But that the council consider something to do with at least preserving the history akin to what is already required in the RT zone, which is if this building, if this home, any or one of the William Allen homes that's in the RT zone were going to get demolished, the owner would have to submit, correct me if I'm wrong, Lyle, some sort of a documentary history, if you will, photographs and whatnot of the structure. They could still demolish it, I think. But before that occurred, they have to submit that to the city, some sort of a report. So, you know, what gets done with that report, I don't know. But it's at least a nod to recognizing some history, which we have in Kaysville and particularly with William Allen. And this was along the line of Bamberger Railroad, and there's probably a lot of history with this property in this area that should at least be documented for the future, and maybe the council should consider something along those lines.
Before we go move forward, I was just reminded that we do need to have the public hearing. So, is there anybody here that wants to talk about this? I know that we didn't get any follow-up email. Apologize. Let's continue.
That was my only comment.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just have to add, at the APA conference today, we had a discussion about development agreements. And basically, the thrust of it was that we shouldn't be requiring development agreements for every little rezon or every little thing that we do. And I actually even went so far as to cite this as an example of where we're doing something like that. But in this particular case, I mean, I'm not willing to say we shouldn't do that because of the sensitivity that was around this particular property. And we've got the draft now, and we've gone this far down the road with it. I think if we're willing to recommend a positive recommendation for the rezon, then we ought to include the development agreement. I think it would go a long ways towards alleviating some of the feelings in the neighborhood.
Yep. So, I mean, again, as a commission, we do have broad discretion and some of the stipulations. So, I agree with what Josh said, and everybody knows that I usually err on the side of the rights of the property owner. Having said that, now you've got all these variables that go into it, being a historical home. Yes, I do understand, as Mr. Woods pointed out, that you don't have to. It's up to the owner. And then, we also get, in general, public from the comments about, you know, again, the library and try to keep things quote unquote as they are. And I do believe that Commissioner Lyons' issue brought up about commercial creep is relevant in this area. I mean, if you look at it, the totality of the circumstance, again, here, it says... I mean, if you look at it, the totality of the circumstance, again, here it says, let me just make sure here. The request does not include a specific plan or concept. So if we do make a positive recommendation, and it is passed by the city council, I mean, there could be something that, you know, if Mr. Nielsen decides to sell that, then who knows what could come in it? So I think that is something worthy of discussion, and with the agreement development, I think we should add something in there, because that's what the city councils expects us to do, is to flush out all these details. And just because the fact that we don't have people here, or there were no emails, I do believe that the way that this was worded, again, I thought it was tabled, we weren't going to talk about it, so.
Well, they were, we had the public, we had public comment.
Right, yeah. Yeah, but in the last one, we agreed to table it, so that way, Mr. Nielsen, Mr. Wood, whoever was representing, would be able to hash things out with the neighbor, obviously with also the, our staff, so.
And that seems to me that's what's been done.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure the commission is okay, the fact that it doesn't include any specific plans in agreement development?
The development agreement just basically says, you know, you're limited to these uses for this use and not the others, and meet the design standards and the criteria for development in the city, and that's basically it, which I think is not bad.
I mean, I kind of echo what Wilf said earlier, which is,
Right.
I think we, as a city or commission and council, have been guilty of this, but I think it sounds like it's also becoming the norm that we try, municipalities are trying to use development agreements to exert more control, which in the abstract, I don't necessarily agree with. What should happen, as Wilf is saying, is we have existing ordinances that have been legislated, have been weighed and debated and negotiated, if you will, and they stand. The question before us with a rezone is, do we want to rezone it to the currently standing, you know, legislation? And we don't need necessarily to be adding in all these extra things all the time with development agreements. So I think development agreements should become, they should be, and I think they, at least initially, were supposed to be the exception, and now they've started to become the rule, and I think this is a perfect example to what Wilf said. So I don't necessarily think we need the development agreement, but because it's here and they put the work into it, and the council probably wants it or will utilize it, I have no necessarily big objection to it, but I just say that as an item moving forward for us to think about, that we don't necessarily always need them.
You're kind of echoing what was talked about at the APA conference today. Would have been, you would have been interested to hear that, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is basically, for the big complex projects that, you know, have a lot of pieces and infrastructure and phasing and all of those kinds of things, development agreements make sense.
Sure.
For the standard little, you know, something like this, it maybe isn't a good idea to require development agreements on all of these, because we have the rules in place already that we should be having. Plus, it kind of, that's not what development agreements were meant for.
Right.
And so, but, you know, as I said, I think in this case, we're this far down the road with it.
Yep.
We've had these discussions with the neighbors and with the applicant, and the applicant seems to be willing to do this, and I, you know, I think, go ahead with it.
Yep. I guess I'll add one more thing. I mean, I do believe in small government, less regulation, et cetera, et cetera. Having said that, I also do believe in the checks and balances, and yes, we are using this, or cities are using this, not the way that it was intended. Having said that, I think that this is where the checks and balances come in for the neighbors that live in that area, so I, that's just a sidebar comment.
If I could, I just make one more comment. One of the reasons why we were just following with the development agreement is because we didn't have a plan. There is no plan, and so the neighbors got wild ideas of.
Right. Seven-Elevens, gas stations.
So we really wanted to try and do our best to alleviate some of those concerns, and really, that was a development agreement. While you're right, something this small really probably shouldn't have one, because of the nebulous nature of it, we just felt having a development agreement should alleviate at least some of those concerns that it's not just the wild, wild west when it does start to develop.
Yeah. I think, you know, and I think that probably, to me, the most legitimate concern on this is the commercial zoning encroaching further east. And so, I get that. This limits what kind of commercial activity would be going further east, and so maybe kind of a compromise in that way, so maybe it makes some sense. And if we get more things like this, then maybe we ought to be looking at creating a different zone or something that would be, you know, but right now, this is the only one we've got.
Mixed-use zoning.
Yeah.
Yep.
The other footnote I would say to what Tom said, which is, I think it's commendable that the property owner wants to do that and has, you know, cooperated with the neighbors and whatnot. But just to add on to the comment about development agreements being exceptions, same comment with plans. We, in theory, a rezone doesn't need a plan, a site plan, to go along with it.
Right.
Again, the consideration is, what is the existing ordinance? And are we okay with rezoning a piece of property? And what might go in under the guise of the existing ordinance? We don't need a plan to go with it all the time. A plan and a development agreement should be the exception.
Well, and is it compatible with the general plan?
Yeah. But you don't need necessarily a plan for that, I guess is my point.
Right, not a specific site plan.
Right.
Yeah. And our general plan is so general.
Yeah, very general, yep.
It probably would be compatible with it.
Yeah. Toby, thoughts?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I think that, you know, this applicant would have bought the property at Sixter North Main Street. That went from general commercial to our, you know, multifamily. I mean, this is not like, this is like crazy. It's not like it's out in the middle of nowhere, you know, like in a residential zone. It's like right adjacent to a commercial zone. I think it's fine. I don't really see that there's like going to be like a huge amount of commercial creeping up from this. It's just like, this is kind of the end of it, I think, right here, so I'd be in favor of it.
Abby?
Yeah, I mostly feel the same way. Toby's got it covered. I think I appreciate their willingness to go the extra mile and kind of make peace with the neighbors. I think a lot of times, we have stuff come before us, people get upset, you know, and oftentimes, we'll send them back to work with the neighbors, and I think that's what they've done. I think it's what we like to see. So even though you don't have to have a plan or a development agreement, I appreciate kind of the good, I guess, good faith effort that they've made in trying to calm things down a little bit, I guess, so that people understand and people feel like, I don't know, like they're not just being steamrolled.
Steve, comments?
Jared?
I'm supportive.
Okay. Do I, ready for motion?
I'll make a motion. So I will move that we recommend approval of the rezone of .4 acres at 65 West Crestwood Road from R-18 to the G.C. zoning district with the general, or excuse me, with the development agreement as it's been proposed. And then the additional recommendation I would make is that the council considers some measure, at least discuss some possible requirement or something of documenting the history and then turning that documentation over to, I don't know if this, is there a historic preservation committee and let them utilize that? So in 50 years, when, you know, there's photos being posted on Facebook of the way Kaysville used to be, this could be on there. That's my motion.
Maybe it'll be beyond Facebook.
Right, right, right.
It'll come out.
Telepathy. I'll second it.
Voting starts with the vice chair.
Aye.
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 Aye. And Lyle, again, October, be this in front of the council?
Yeah, the October 7th date, I believe is, so council will be busy that night with these items.
Awesome. All right, now we're ready to move to agenda number seven, reports, correspondences, and calendar.
So a couple of reports, and we're going to some calendar items, and we talked about some things tonight, I think, of the general plan update. So you asked the status of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. I'll give just a brief update on that. The internal accessory pieces have been accepted by the council, and we're working on the external conversation with the council still. Our landscape ordinance is another that we've worked on with here at the commission. Hopefully, that'll be back before you next time for review again, as we've tried to incorporate some of the ideas and comments, and once we get the noticing out that's required to get that in front of you for a public hearing to get additional public feedback. Our home occupation also would be on a hearing likely at the next meeting. So those are some of the ordinances that are, I'm going to just reminder on, and kind of the status of it is. The mixed-use ordinance, something that we dealt with recently, has been approved by the city council. They made some adjustments with the percentages of use types within that, but did ultimately adopt it. It will become effective, I believe, the day we put it, it's December 1st.
December 1st.
They wanted it not to be acted too quickly while we're still kind of figuring out the general plan items before we start seeing applications, knowing that there is some interest to potentially pursue those types of development.
What's the, sorry.
Please.
What's the timeline on the landscape?
Yeah, so Michael will do the public hearing at this next meeting on the 23rd, if I catch my dates right.
Okay.
So whether you're ready to make a recommendation for that or not, we'll be chugging right along with that if we've got changes mostly incorporated and ready to go from our last meeting, when we spoke to that.
So Lyle, one of the comments at the city council, because I came to listen to what they did with the ADU ordinance, was they had one public comment at that meeting, at the public hearing for the accessory dwelling, and a gentleman stood up and talked about short-term rental. And he specifically spoke to the fact that we excluded them from ADUs.
Tom.
And it was interesting because he's like, hey, this is already going on, it's a permissive use in the city, and I don't disagree, but I think at some point, we're going to have to take that up. I'd like to see what we can do. I think it's going on, but there's a balance there. I've talked, recently talked with a couple other cities where this has gone on, and they said, you know, the problem they run into is where you have ADUs and then you have internal or short-term rentals, you have to balance it, because what happens oftentimes is you have a short-term rental, then where you're trying to balance out your housing and increase housing stock, and then all of a sudden, you allow for short-term rentals, and the families then take the short-term rentals and turn them into Airbnbs, because you can make more money on them. And they just said they've seen their housing stock in some of those cities decrease where that happens, and so they said it's, you need to figure out.
Wait, I'm sorry, what decreases?
The ADUs, your rental stock.
Oh, got it.
And so there's a balance there, so where you allow it, how you allow it, the business types and what you do with it. So I think we need to be cognizant of that as we go forward, because we don't want to all of a sudden say, yeah, we're allowing ADUs because we want to increase our housing stock for people that need rentals, and then go out and then in the same breath say, we're going to allow short-term rentals, and have people who've just put in this nice ADU say, oh, it's great, let's now create a rental market that excludes people who need a short-term rental market that excludes people who need longer-term housing. That's my comment.
Yeah, I think we could, we'd be happy to get work on some provisions and drafts that we can look at and start that discussion. I think that would be appropriate.
And I'll call, the city of Phoenix has seen this, and a lot of the municipalities, particularly during COVID, where they needed housing, and people vacationed or needed places to go, and they've seen that pick up, and they've watched their long-term housing stock disappear, because people then coming vacationing those warmer areas while the COVID's gone on, and they're not seeing that housing stock return as COVID's waxing and waning.
Yeah, I think the, I'll add something on that one. I think when we do move forward, we should be inclusive, because we've talked about a bunch of what-if scenarios from the widower, who, you know, if she were allowed to do short-term rental, would be able to at least balance the books, or let's say, short-term rental for possible, you know, the Olympics, the next one. So that's the only thing that I would add, and not be exclusive and not rule anything out.
Pardon me.
Yeah, well, that'll be, we'll get to work on that, I think it is timely.
We just make sure we write the ordinance excluded at Quan's house, so you can only have an ADU and no short-term rental.
And that could be a piece of the edit, we'll find a way that works.
It's the same, it's the same way. I told the joke, I said, somebody in the county asked me how we did the 75% for the accessory dwelling units. I said, well, we figured out where all the elected leaders were and put it in their neighborhoods, and excluded ours.
I've got a picture of an ADU here in the driveway. It's interesting. Take a look at that.
Oh, my gosh.
Yep, that's what's going to happen. That is.
That's Sandy or someone?
No, 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 that's in our neighborhood, 400 and 200. Wow. Yeah, take a look at it.
That's in town?
Right there, yeah.
First one, huh?
Yep, it's ginormous, obviously, but, I mean, just.
Disappeared.
Look at my other pictures, darn it.
We want to see.
No, but I mean, this is something, that's it, right there.
That's an extra accessory dwelling.
Yeah.
Did they decide not to allow those?
Well, if they get it in before.
Don't show me.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I know, it's interesting.
I don't think you want to see that one.
Yeah. What else do we?
So, yeah, I think the biggest thing to bring up
Yes.
Is the general plan process and where we're at with that. So I, we did receive today, and again, I haven't done much more than just what you see right here to open it, make sure we got the links working. Just kicked over some links, so that you have the general plan here in front of you for your review for the first time. You can see here, it's 88 pages, there's appendices also on a separate link, so there's a lot in here when you compare that to the nine pages of plan that we essentially have currently, which is very different. So, you know, and not being very familiar with it myself, I can't go through and introduce you to this, but would just first encourage you to start taking a look at it, read through it, any comments you have, corrections, suggestions. What I think we do need to kind of talk through tonight is a little bit of the timeframe and schedule, and where we're going to be involved as a commission. What, again, I sent out an email recently kind of showing that, is that okay? Do we need to alter it? Do we need to schedule anything in between those as a commission to work through more to provide input? So anyway, just a big picture, if you didn't see that email yet, look for it. If you can't find it, ask me, and I'll try and resend it. Otherwise, we'll all kind of be looking at it fresh eyes together, and.
Oh, no, Wilf found the email.
Well, looking at the general plan.
Oh, yeah, I found it.
Lyle, what's our, when does Kaysville reach build-out? What are you projecting?
And this kind of speaks to that, it's a little bit interesting. So, and in fact, I just talked with a group of Kaysville University showing again about what we have left. There's, you know, 300, give or take, acres that's out there still. If we continue developing in the way we've been going, we chew up about 60 acres a year. So, you know, four, five years, and we could be done with at least the greenfield development in Kaysville, then on to almost completely redevelopment and infill development, so.
I thought, no use of the planning.
We can't predict what will happen exactly that fast. If somebody doesn't want to sell the farm yet, so to speak, it could take longer, but that's probably a fair prediction. Part of this process early on is very interesting, because the consultants trying to figure out build-out projections, what kind of population growth are we looking at? And what is fascinating is, you know, different reports within the city and others, you know, kind of Kaysville, about, you know, 40,000, thereabouts is what we expected, but as we really looked at, we don't really have that much ground left to grow on. How are we going to reach, you know, new census data just came out, we're 33,000 people. So where are we going to put number seven to reach some of those projections? This kind of addresses, you know, maybe in a more realistic manner, what that growth will be, how it's handled.
Mutton hollow. Mutton hollow.
Yeah, again, I can't predict too much on this, not having dug into myself, but please be, so let me pull up real quick the schedule and kind of the unit that sent out recently. I think it's worth the founders to check through.
Yeah, I want to talk.
Lyle, we can always annex Fruit Heights.
That's what I was about to say, yes.
We come Fruitville.
Yes.
Fruitville.
Case Heights.
Case Heights.
Let's do it. Do it. Done.
So, you know, this is something that we put together with the consultant, and probably partly the blame, with the pandemic and some other reasons, we told them, let's get it right, let's take our time, we've done extra survey work, and we've talked about this as a commission, right? And at the same time, we need to get it done. So we've kind of come down to a crunch time of, you know, we've got council members that may be changing other things, trying to get this completed and adopted before the end of the year. So that's what this is crafted around and intent at, that it doesn't have to be so, and it doesn't have to be in this order, even if you make it so, that's the timeframe. So the consultant will be presenting just kind of the big picture, talking through the process next week with the city council, just an introduction to this, that we're anticipating as part of their council meeting. So I'm certainly encouraged to watch that. And then, as anticipated, the public open house in a couple of weeks, we try to get input from residents on this document. We've engaged them previously in other processes now that they, like, you can see it. And in theory, the planning commission's official look at it would be, you know, based on this, after the advisory committees then taking some of that public feedback into account, before you in October on the 14th. And I think the way that we've set that up was, it's just the second meeting, I think it's a special meeting actually, unless we got the dates wrong. Second meeting in October, so that might actually drag that out an extra week or so. So, to the commission, maybe to leave it to you, and I know, put you on the spot, Will, for private some comments, is that soon enough for you to start officially looking at it? Do you want to do anything before and in between these processes as a group? We could hold special meetings, we can do a lot offline, back and forth, and so forth. So, yeah, that's, just throwing it out there, I'd be interested in your discussions on what involvement do you need and at what point, and how much is the commission interested as you make the recommendations?
So, I know, having gone through, so I'm going through two processes right, well, three for federal. What is the, what are the requirements for noticing? What are the requirements for public hearing for this? And what do we need to do? Because I know, I know we have a citizen participation plan for federal that I have to follow. It's, you know, it's dedicated 24 CFR 91. I mean, it's, it's there. I'm committed to it for each part of everything I do. 30-day notice for most, 15 for some. So where are you at on that? And then also, are we gonna be able to get the participation that we need to get, I mean, to get the people we need in from the city, citizens engaged enough to be able to come in and do what we need to do? I mean, that's, that's the thing I'm curious about. And lastly, are we hamstring ourselves to try and rush this? Because it seems a little bit rushed. And that's my last piece.
Yep.
Yeah, and the first one's probably easier to answer than the second two. So, as far as noticing, required process, it's probably a lot less stringent than those federal processes you're working through. It's a lot like a rezonance, if we put up like a 10-day notice for a public hearing and where we include the public, that's really all we need. We have one public hearing on it, planning commission has to see it and make a recommendation to the council. But beyond that, it's extra or above and beyond. So procedurally, we could easily meet requirements. Whether or not that gives sufficient time to get enough public involvement, good question. Again, we've had previous involvement, how much more do you want on the backend of it? Kind of up to you and the council to determine, so I don't have one answer for that one. And will we get much involvement based on timeframe is a great question. So, yeah, I don't know that I have a good answer to those last two.
So, Mr. Chair, my concerns. Back in May or June, when we talked about some of the scheduling on this, to the state code, the general plan is to be prepared and recommended by the planning commission. Not the staff, not the consultants, not an advisory body, not anybody else, it's the planning commission. And so, to that end, and I have to tell you, through my career, I've seen a lot of times where the plan really isn't done by the planning commission. It's done by all those other groups that I mentioned, and then the planning commission just kind of is like a rubber stamp. I don't like that, and I don't think it should be that way. Particularly since the purpose in the state code is, it's the planning commission's recommendation. And so, back when we had an advisory group meeting in, in May or June, I suggested that the, that, given all the input that we had at that point, or when we were gonna finish getting the input, that the consultant ought to go ahead and draft something up, and then send it to us, and give us a chance to look it over, and make our comments on it, and then they finalize the draft. We haven't seen this. This is the first time we're seeing this now. So, in essence, if, you know, if we follow what I was talking about, this is our chance to look at it now. I think we ought to have a chance to look at it, talk about it, discuss it amongst ourselves. You know, is this reflecting what we think with the public's input, what we think the public was saying, and so on and so forth? And then that becomes the plan with whatever feedback we have and the modifications that are made to that. And that's what the planning commission's proposal is at that point. Then it goes out for the public comment, for all of the other stuff. Given this schedule, that would be really hard to do.
Would you want a 30-day public comment or longer?
I, you know, I don't know that it needs 30 days, just because I think, Lyle, you can correct me, but it seems like when we go for public comment, we get some public comment early on, but then it kind of slacks off, and then it's, just kind of sits there.
Yeah, and we can even find some data on that. So some of these recent surveys, for example, in this process, we'll do the outreach, and it's probably a three to five day period where we're getting comment, and after that, it's just onesies, twosies, until we really hit the advertising again, and it's maybe another day or two. But it's really just that initial kick on almost every instance where we really get much involvement. So, you know, you've got different experience as well, so, you know, I've looked at those experiences and expertise. We certainly could keep it up a little longer. I think we'd get a fair amount within a couple of weeks.
Well, it goes back to, it goes back to the question that was asked at the planning, or the planning conference date, like, you know, how do you, how do you get a better cross-section? I think it was the session I was in on resiliency planning for your community. And they were talking about, how do you, how do you get just more than the same neighborhood groups turning out, providing comment? And I think that's kind of-
Well, we sort of did that with the consultant.
And I think we did that with the consultant group. So, my, I think, I'm just wondering, like, if we just do a regular 10-day, but still try and meet a deadline, but still, like Will's saying, come up with our recommendation.
Yeah, you know, what I'd kind of like to see is us, us take this plan now, work it over, have a discussion amongst ourselves, agree with what we think, you know, ought to be, it ought to say, and then send it back to the, to either the staff or the consultant to make the modifications. And then that's what goes out to the public for this public open house. And then they reflect and they comment on that. Then we take the comments that come from that and make any other modifications we think that ought to be made to it, and then it's ready for the public hearing. And it's ready to have the public hearing and then to be recommended on to the council. But, you know, that's gonna, given this schedule, we got the plan today. The council briefing is, is that set for the 16th, Lyle, to do one?
Not, yeah, it's not officially on the agenda just yet, but-
Okay.
And, you know, the idea would be they would just kind of go over, overview.
Just go over. If they, if, if that goes ahead on the 16th, what I really would suggest that they say to the council is, this is the draft plan we got from the consultant. The planning commission hasn't had a chance to vet this yet. Unless we feel like we can do that between now and the 16th, which is one week, seems pretty tight.
Well, and the problem with that is, we wouldn't be doing it in public.
Right. Yeah.
Correct. So do we, the question I have to your, to your point is, do we want to, do we need a work session?
Well, that's, I, I would suggest that because then we have nothing else to worry about on the agenda for that meeting.
Do we just push it on the 23rd?
The, so the 23rd, it lists this as the, as the public open house, which is also our planning commission meeting. And that doesn't seem like good timing to do the two on the same day or same evening.
Yeah.
And, and I'm guessing that on our September 23rd meeting, we're gonna have, you know, regular agenda items. And I'll tell you, honestly, with my experience again, too, when you do these things in a regular meeting, you either don't wind up having enough time to really address this, or you get distracted by the other items that are on the agenda.
Is there a way that on the 23rd, we make this the main agenda, and if we need to move whatever comes up to October meeting, that gives us time for public comments?
Could you? Yes.
Okay, I'd like to do that.
I think my recommendation is, well, I'd be open to different things. We'll have certain applications that are somewhat time-sensitive that people want to push through, and so I think you keep the regular scheduled items moving through on the 23rd, but we could, meeting early is a little tricky because then you run into time constraints and you may not be giving it, but do an extra meeting. You know, we could move the public open house back another week or two or whatever, if the case is appropriate.
Yeah.
And maybe it's just a completely different day, hold a special work session.
Would we get more, would we get more participation on a city council night with the, with the public open house?
Say it again.
Would we get more participation from the public for an open house on a city council night?
On a city council night?
Potentially. So I attend almost every city council meeting, and you're just as popular as they are, just because of the agenda items.
But they don't have the social media power that Abby does.
Yeah, it just depends on what's on the agenda, right? So, I don't know if there's anything that will be on the council's meeting, for example, on the October 1st or whatever date, that's really gonna be bringing people out. There might be, but it just seems to be the trick.
I'll tell you this, though, the, the county commission, all 60 people watching the county commission are typically inside the building.
Yeah.
Lyle, question then, kind of to follow up with, with Will's point, points. What, what are we not aware of or not considering that is going into the timing that's proposed?
I don't know, I think it was stated, but, so, again, it doesn't have to be this timing. Really, it was kind of based off of, can't drag it out forever, but partially, you know, we've got a council that's been involved or at least watching, can we get it done before we have maybe a different body that almost starts things over, right? So, you don't have all five council members that are up for reelection, but I, I think there's some interest in perhaps having that continuity of people who've been involved. So that's a lot of what reflects this.
When's the new council sworn in?
In January.
Technically, January 1st, well.
It's a few days after that.
So the, so the first meeting-
January 6th or 7th.
Uh, that they will be, that the, the current council's out and the new council's in is, is the first-
First part of the year.
Council meeting in January.
January.
I mean, potentially, you know, I mean, you could get two new council members. You could get two council members that have been involved in this process. So, it's kind of a, you know, it's a crapshoot.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for the commission to have that conversation with the mayor and the electors, you know, and we could do that as part of this. I'd be happy to, you know, present the schedule on the 16th with this to the council and talk about some of these concerns. Perhaps remember the commission would like to talk about that and help with the timing as well. And, you know, I don't know that the council has said it must be this way, but just our, we work with the consultant and understanding some of their comments. This was the proposal we kind of put together to help work through that. But the comments that I have, and again, I've been a little bit guilty of delaying it because there have been a lot of comments on why rush it, right? And so that's why it doesn't feel like it's been rushed yet, and now we're here-
Yeah.
Kind of trying to rush it.
Yeah.
So, I don't think the council would be opposed to, you know, if we can come up with a reasonable process, different dates and a little bit-
Different schedule.
And it may or may not even be by the end of the year, like, that could be fine. I, I think it could even work bumping some of those earlier meetings back a little bit, and if we had to hold a special meeting or something, we could still even do it by the end of the year, and we just have to have it off our normal meeting dates. And we could allow ourselves more time to digest it. So, I'd be happy to come up with a proposed alternate schedule that gives you more involvement and a lot more time on the, on the front end before it gets to the public open house.
So, I mean, on the 23rd, we could do, whether it's half an hour working session or 45 minutes, and I do believe at that point, you promised us food, right?
It's the only way I get you to work session.
Yep, okay.
So I kind of have a selfish reason to, because I'm gonna be out of town on the 23rd.
I also-
Can you dial in?
I mean-
That's important to know.
No, no, I mean, seriously.
Uh, probably, well, yeah, maybe.
Maybe.
It depends.
So, I think for that exact same reason, it's gonna be a tough sell to the current council and mayor to not get this done by the time they're done.
Yeah.
Is that the feeling? Is that the-
Well, I, I, it's a total assumption on my part. It's a total assumption on my part. But it would be like all of us having gone through this, and then somebody else gets to make the ultimate decision.
Yeah. But, yeah, if you look at the schedule, I mean, this has it for December 2nd for their consideration of the adoption, but they actually have another meeting in December. So it could get extended out to the 16th, for example, which I think is their second meeting.
Yeah, opt in the-
And Christmas party.
Meet once during December, but there's no reason that we couldn't have these items on those type of meeting dates. So not only could we bump back the front end of this to give more time for those initial views, but we could extend the entire length out before the year's up, absolutely.
I say make the city council show up for the second. Yes.
And I mean, if you really wanted to push it, you could probably indicate that they could hold a special meeting in late December.
I like where Wilf is headed.
And we did that in Oregon for budget adoption.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a common-
Is there, is there gonna be food on this special session?
There better be.
Okay.
And then you look at November, for example, the commission, I think-
Vaccination laws.
Second meeting is on Thanksgiving, maybe before.
Oh, yeah.
The second council meeting-
There you go.
About the conflict of the holiday and such. So, if there's one over within this, and we still could probably, maybe we can do, we're getting it done by the end of the year, but give us more time. So, if I could, maybe Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to work on it, make that alternate proposal. And maybe according to you, this chair, if you want to sign some notes on the commission, touch base with them on the schedule for making the whole commission.
Yeah, let's do that.
Before the 16th, we'll have your input as a commission on the calendar.
On schedule.
That we can present to the council.
Are we okay on the 23rd with doing a working session? I mean, I know you're gonna be out, but maybe we have you just literally call in on a phone and-
Well, you're in the Caribbean.
Yes. Is there thoughts on that?
I like a working session.
Okay.
And if we can do it the 23rd, but Wilf is a key member, he's got more background than probably any of us in this regard, it sure would be nice to have him here.
Do you think you'll be able to at least call in or?
I, you know, I don't know. I mean, we're gonna be, I think on the 23rd, we're gonna be kind of on the road again. It kind of depends on where I wind up.
You're going the whole week, Will?
Well, I'm gone from the 16th to the 24th, which is kind of like in the middle of a lot of this. And then after that, I mean, depending on what our scheduling is.
And maybe that's what I'll do as well as part of the calendar dates. If anybody could, conflicts with scheduling, I'd kick that back, and then we may just have to do something about email.
I could always give you my comments in writing, you know.
Okay.
Two, just send you my comments and concerns that I have, and if I can call in, I will.
Could we do it on the Tuesday?
On which Tuesday?
The 28th.
Tuesday, the 28th, yeah, probably would work.
And we certainly can schedule off days.
But I don't know how, you know, I mean, we ought to see what everybody's schedule is like on the commission.
And it's a lot to digest and a lot of-
It is.
It's very important, and, you know, I don't want to undermine the value of this, this plan and this document. Again, I'm not familiar with it, but my input on the, you know, it's 88 pages, but what I told the consultant is, I do better with pictures than words. So, hopefully, you could actually get through it pretty quick.
I think so.
It probably looks more daunting than it really is. The hard part is-
I skimmed through it, and yeah.
Digesting it and just understanding the impacts and analyzing it. So, you know, again, it's, it's big, but it's not as big as maybe it appears. But it is extremely important. So, that's why it takes time.
With the landmark design, is there a way that they can let us write comments anywhere? Is there, by chance, or?
Oh, I can ask them about-
Yeah, if not, I may have a way to do it through work, so that way we can, I'll start at least doing our homework and putting the comments in, and definitely, Will would, obviously, your input is- Well, it's like a working session, right?
No, yeah, it's open, it has to be open to the public.
That's a great question. Yeah, we would notice it as a public meeting, and generally the public won't attend, but- they're welcome to come watch.
I thought we were just talking about if we're doing in comments on text.
Oh, like online collaboration.
Oh, yeah.
Does that have to be open to the public? That's an open.
That's fine. I mean, I'm, if we can find a mechanism to only allow us to comment.
I think, I think to Abby's point, it may violate the letter of the Open to Public Meetings Act. Certainly, it violates the spirit of that act.
Yeah. Good morning. Yeah, and I think if you, and I'd be happy to check with our attorney as well, there's likely a way we could do it if we can make it available for others to view, or if you simply do it, and then we bring it together at that meeting, and when we can speak about it openly for the public to see your comments.
Yeah. I mean, it's not an unusual process.
Yeah. But I mean, I think in the meantime, though, could we at least get this out there, whether it's on, you know, both on the website under planning commission and on Facebook too?
Well, and that would be maybe the direction of the commission. So, what I'm hearing is, let the commission make its comments netted first, and then let the public see how that's like.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm suggesting.
So, I would just look at is, whatever the collective decision making is, do you want the public to weigh in now, or after you've had your chance to modify, you know, direct it a little bit further?
I mean, I, I don't mind having public comments in now as we go through this process, because somebody else might have something that we never thought about.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's a valid point, and I think if, maybe we go ahead and put it out to public comment before we do our work session. And throw this out there, let the public have a look at it, provide their comments, and then we go to work on it. I guess that could be a thing to do. And maybe the next thing to do is let Lyle go give the council a briefing on this, so they feel like something's happening now, and they can see what's happening. And then do the public open house and public comment, and then we do our work, our work session.
That may make the scheduling easier, obviously, if we did it that way.
I think it might.
So, yeah, if that's the consensus, and then again, we'd still have a public open, I don't know, we could do even the public open house earlier on.
But I, I would really suggest too, that as you look it over, if you have things in there that you want to comment on, do it as part of the public comment too. So, your comments or your thoughts are out there for the public to see as well when they see it.
Yep.
And then we can talk about all of that when we get together as a commission...
Okay.
...to talk about it. That goes to the transparency thing too, Abby, that you're talking about. And people can see what, what we as commissioners are thinking about.
Right.
Any objections?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, so I, I think the direction is, we'll work on the calendar dates and the scheduling and fine tune that a little better to give more time, but we're going to...
Put this out there.
Do the public comment towards the front end of that. And then we'll be meeting as a commission, once we feel like we've received that, that input, and then finesse and finalize the draft. And I, and I would imagine somewhere that it has laid out, you'd, you'd get a chance to kind of get the work session where you're hearing the public comments, you've all thought about it, hopefully for a month or so at that point. And we'll have the work session, make the fine tuned tweaks, we'll hold a public hearing shortly after where you make a formal recommendation, assuming it's ready. I mean, you may find that it takes more than one stab at the, at the apple there, that you need to see it many times. And hopefully, with the schedule, if we talk about, let's have the council alert that, you know, the commission's going to take their time and really feel ready before it comes to be brought in, so we'll see what they say.
You know, given that, that open house date that you've got there on the twenty-third, I'm just thinking about that a little bit, and I don't know, you know, if, if we have an open house, where would we have it? Where would the open house be?
Typically, well, no, I shouldn't say typically, but certainly, we could host it here.
Yeah.
We have in the past tried to kind of tie in...
Your house, you got to pick a lot, apparently.
Right.
So that we can up our numbers.
Have we got anything like that coming up?
I'm not sure anything's going on.
Yeah. So, if, I'm just thinking, if we did it at the same, same night as the planning commission meeting, you know, that may bring some people just to come to the planning commission meeting, but that could be going on...
Yeah.
...elsewhere, and, and then the commission has their meeting here. And then the commission members could go in and then come out here for the meeting, and if it's still going, go back to that after the meeting, or whatever.
I mean, in theory, we could just have it out there.
Out of the lobby, yeah.
We should have it in the library. Everyone was buying to get there.
Oh, Abby, don't go there.
She went there, yeah.
Too soon, too soon. I think, I think we ought to have it in the new...
You want to, really want to rip the Band-Aid off, don't you?
In the new, in the new parking garage.
Does landmark provide us material support?
Yeah, generally, the open house, they'd have boards and items, so...
Okay.
We'll work with them on preparing how that looks, and if, well, many of you have been on the commission for previous open houses that we've held, and you think of kind of kicking off the general plans, remember workshop, or portable housing things, or something that we've done in more recent years, and maybe we get fifty people at them, but, you know, optimistically, hopefully, we see a lot more than that. And again, I think this is important, but, so it'll be a combination to, to the best we can, I think, to the credit of the commission, if we get this out there on the website and notice people, and I think the bulk of the comments are going to come through that mechanism of, just that online feedback. But we'll have some good conversations at an open house that you kind of just can't have on the written comments section, so, yeah, I think both are important.
I think you do, yeah, you need to do both. I agree.
Well, that gives me some homework, and we'll, we'll keep in touch with you, but it's exciting to actually have it. I was sweating a little bit today to see if it was ever going to come in my email, but that's the...
I can attest to that. I saw Lyle at the conference, and he, you know, I kept saying, have you seen the plan yet? And Lyle kept going, I promised they were going to send it to me.
Business.
I was close, they did.
And, yeah, maybe we can see the comment report, and we saw several familiar faces down at the AP conference, and we may see more tomorrow, and we'll learn from it being. So, we haven't done a lot of it, I think, traditionally, but I, you know, it'd be interesting following meetings, maybe to give yourself some time, and, you know, I'd love to hear from the commission what it is that you hear, and share with each other, things you've learned, that and other training opportunities as we do them. So, unless you want to report on anything you saw today, who attended, more to come tomorrow, and that's all I have for busy gentlemen.
I will tell you something else that was interesting at the conference, and I've talked with Lyle about this. I, I was, I, one of the presenters at a session on signs today, and we talked about where the legal situation may be going with signs and...
Is it billboards?
That, well, not just billboards, the implications really is for all signs, because if you take a look at Reed from 2015 that the Supreme Court decided, and then a couple of Supreme, or not, some circuit court decisions subsequent to that, and now the US Supreme Court has taken up the Austin, Texas Circuit Court decision, which was with the...
It's in the fifth circuit.
The other side of that was Reagan Outdoor International, which is, is indeed our own Reagan sign company. Supreme Court took it up. So, they, they are going to review that case, and so we may have something, you know, by next spring, fall, uh, summer.
It'll be in the spring.
But if that goes the way that that circuit court, two of the circuit courts have ruled, you essentially cannot read what's on the sign to determine how to regulate it. You just have to decide how you're going to do signs, period, regardless of what's on them. So, you know, time, place, and manner. How big a sign, where can it be located, how far away, how bright, how that stuff, regardless, but you cannot look at what it says. Which, this is the interesting thing to me, because Reagan brought this case in Austin, and it's to allow them to convert existing billboards they've got that are non-conforming to digital. And their ordinance says we won't allow for that, you know, that increase in the nonconformity, but they will for on-premise signs, but not for off-premise. And the circuit court said, that's content based, you can't do that. If that holds up, I think Reagan may have just shot themselves in the foot, because it's going to change their whole business model. Because if that holds up, you can't do it on content, then anybody can do off-premise advertising. And we have a case right here in our own lovely community of that happening right now.
Over on the subway.